I want to welcome everyone to our August four meeting. And ask Mr. Michael Williams to give us a word of prayer.
Okay, by his prayer, uh, have a father, we're just grateful and thankful for be able to come together to this night. Uh, we just asked your spirit continue leading God, uh, the decision makers, uh, those who are in attendance and honest tonight, uh, for public participation, um, just continue to allow us to use your wisdom and decision making that are made tonight. God, continue to bless this school system, this nation, and as we continue to just do the best we can to be alike and be an example of you in all that we do. And bless again these teachers, this administration, and those of stakeholders in this community in your name, Jesus Christ, we pray amen. And send out staff, prayers.
Let's go to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next on our consent items are the agenda, minutes of the July nineteenth meeting, elementary school fundraisers, high school fundraisers, softball fundraisers, and overnight field trip for FFA FCC LA camp, policies for revision, IC, curriculum development, and IDB comprehensive health and physical education, policy for deletion, GCBA, school bus drivers, and new policies, IEDA, unstructured break time, IKVB divisive concepts complaint resolution process, IKVC material harmful to minors complaint resolution process, JRV, parents build rights policy, and JRVP, parents build rights procedure. It's already been mentioned that, uh, one of the elementary school fundraisers, uh, just wanted a little bit more clarification on this. And, uh, I wanted to ask Ms. Goldman, she would come and explain the rock.
Has its own version now.
We have had a company, um, out of Augusta who, uh, Vulcan Materials of Pondy County has offered to donate a large rock that will be used as a spirit rock, um, at the elementary school. This company is one of our parents and, uh, students' parents and also a paraprofessional's husband is, um, an employee of the company. And, um, they have a large rock, I don't know how much it weighs, I'm waiting on the, um, the weight. And we would put it, um, right by the first gate, um, off Roland York, outside the gate by where the buses pull in as long as, and I thought of this when I went back to my seat, as long as the slope is not too steep right there because it is steep. Um, and make sure that it would be a flat enough spot for that area. The secondary area is close to the mailbox at the front, and neither one of those places are on the new sod. It's all old grass. Um, and this would be a fundraiser that family members, students and staff can rent the rock for twenty-four hours. So it's a sign up, um, an automated sign up on a website, sign up genius. Ms. Dunn would set up, um, twenty-four hour segments for it to start at four P M. And the parents or the school would paint it at four P M. It would be decorated for the entire next day, and then at four P M, another, um, reservation could take over. The, um, people who reserve it are responsible for their own paint and design, that it would be an appropriate design. They would be in charge of cleaning up the area and making sure they don't spray on the grass and things like that. Um, and we would start as soon as, um, if we get approval. And we're looking forward to also reserving it for some faculty and staff incentives throughout the year. You know, shout out to different grade levels and, um, maybe some special days like, um, open house next year and things like that. Um, it is, Mr. Williams, if you'll go to the Google Doc. So they would sign up with the genius, and then we were also exploring some online options, maybe buy school bucks, or they could pay, um, at the office. And, um, so there's just some details on here, and we would post this on our website as well. Just some, um, things that we found when we were researching other schools, just gives, um, suggestions for how many cans of spray paint, things that you need, um, and there's entire Facebook groups dedicated to people like going all out on these rocks. Uh, but we just think it would be a fun idea because elementary kids love their birthday and, um, so either way, if it's by the mailbox or by the bus gate, there is safe places to park, um, and ways to get to that area without being in the road. Um, and Mr. Williams, can you go down, I can't remember if we said ten dollars a day or something?
Ten.
Ten dollars a day, yes, ten dollars a day. Um, and we would rent it throughout the year, so. Any other questions?
Ten dollars a day.
Ten dollars a day, yes.
All right, thank you, Ms. Goldman. All right, anything else on the consent items? All right. I'll make a motion that we accept the consent items as presented.
I'll say it.
You have a second. Mr. Maston, all in favor? Now.
Hi, friends.
Hello. I'm gonna do a petition, okay. Uh, we're gonna move on to financials.
Okay, we are in fiscal year twenty-three now. So this is from July first to July of thirty-first of twenty-twenty-two. We are eight point three-three percent through the fiscal year, that's one month in. Um, here's our revenues for the general fund. Um, we are at five point seven-nine percent as the whole. Uh, however, as we know, this is actually in line with what we usually are, um, seeing at this amount of time because most of our revenue comes in in December. Um, but local ad valorem taxes are right in line with last year's first check. Same with the local intangible recording tax and real, um, real estate transfer. Um, the T A V T title ad valorem tax is also in line with last year's. Um, local other, um, we do not budget for tuition. Uh, so we did have some tuition come in, we do have four students this year. Uh, we don't budget for that just because, you know, there are chances that they could leave the school system and we don't want to, you know, commit to that. Um, state QBE, right on the mark, eight point three-four, which hopefully it would be because they give us that number when we set our budget. Um, state grants, we have, um, two thousand in right now, this is a math and science supplement, they've already deposited that in July. And we'll be getting more in throughout the year. We had a few Medicaid income other grants come in, that was two thousand three forty-eight, with a total of eight hundred and thirteen, um, to date for July. So that's five point seven-nine percent of our revenues as a comparison point. Last year we had four point nine-seven percent, so we're actually doing a little bit better than last year at this time. Moving on to expenditures. At the bottom you can see we're seven point five four, five-four percent, which is good because we're less than the eight point three-three percent of our fiscal year. Um, looking at by, um, function category, um, we are pretty much in line with last year. Last year instruction was at seven point seven percent, pupil surfaces with eleven point six percent. Improvement of instructional services was eight percent, medium, eight point five percent, and pretty much the same throughout, um, the rest of the, um, functions. Um, a big portion of July has a lot of our technology, um, annual subscriptions. So you'll see that ten point twelve percent, that's because that's a one-time expense that we've already kind of budgeted for as of annual, um, subscription. Um, overall, seven point five-four percent of expenditures, last year at this time, we were seven point seven-eight percent. So doing good. Okay, so this might look a little daunting, if you can go down to the little, um, comment at bottom. Okay, this report is not final due to no beginning fund balance as of yet. Beginning fund balance will be available once fiscal year twenty-two is closed. Um, that usually happens late August to mid-September, that actually is always the case, we never closed, um, June at this time. However, usually we're able to have a rough estimate, um, just because we don't have ESER funds involved. We know exactly what we have, we know the tax commissioners, but we know all the receivables, QBE, et cetera. However, this is a different year, uh, we have probably another year of this, but ESER money is, um, in the forefront of many discussions. So we have an August eighteenth, um, ESER discussion with the state to kind of see where we're at. So, um, the reason I do not, I'm not presenting you an ending fund balance is because there could be special revenues that we need to transfer to the general fund. However, it is not going to affect us on a whole because we would be able to spend it in fiscal year twenty-three. So not affecting our fund balance in general, it's just twenty-two versus twenty-three. So right here is just kind of the activity for July. If you can go down to the next slide. Once again, you can see that, you know, a little bit more expenditures than revenues this year. Um, I didn't want to present it, but if we were to take what I have currently pretending that ESER is not the case, we would have an ending fund balance of two point two as of June, take away this two sixty-seven, and it'd be around two million. So that would be our theoretical ending, um, fund balance. However, I don't want to commit to that yet because it could be two point two. I don't want to commit to two million or two point two unless we get a little bit more clarification with our ESER funds for special revenues. Any questions?
I got one, no, there's no concerns with ESER funds, are there?
No.
Okay.
I would, yeah, I would say there's no concerns except where it's gonna land, twenty-two or twenty-three. So, I mean, because we had until September of thirtieth of twenty-twenty-three to spend it.
Correct.
So.
It's just how it falls.
Exactly.
Correct.
My favorite, so. Okay, so this is our SPOS collections proceeds. Um, don't get too used to this chart because it will change next, um, month because this is the last collection for this, so you can see that we have July collecting that last June, um, twenty-twenty-two payment. And once again, it is our highest one yet, ninety-five, nine-one-three, point nine-two. Um, next month, this will go down and you'll have, we'll be starting a whole new, um, table to fill with hopefully high numbers.
And what, remind everybody what we, um, set the new SPOS limit at?
Five million.
Five million because it was starting to go up a little bit, remember when we did this last year? So we set it much higher because what happens is if we, let's say we collected five million, any amount collected after that, we could not receive because it would be up to that five million maximum. So we set that maximum at five million thinking we would never reach it. Now, if Taylor keeps showing us numbers ninety-five to a hundred and fifty, we're gonna be in trouble, but we'll be fine.
Yes, exactly, because it was four point two-five, so we raised it to five. Okay, so this is our, um, SPOS summary, as you can see that ninety-five, nine-one-three that came in for tax collections, leaving us with an ending SPOS balance of four hundred and sixty-eight, eight hundred and sixty-three. Moving on, we have, um, a new balance for our bond tax of five hundred and ninety-six, eight hundred and fifty-eight, leaving us with a total available for future bond interest payments of one million sixty-five thousand. Um, our October first payment, which will pay on September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, is three hundred and sixty-seven, and then we have a hundred, not a hundred, one million one hundred and seventy-seven thousand to pay in April. So I think we're looking pretty promising based off the number we have available right now. Okay, capital projects, um, projected amount, we have eleven-two-eighty-three, um, available from the concession stands, and a hundred and five available for other projects. Um, interest of one thousand five hundred and fourteen, a balance remaining of a hundred and sixteen thousand. Okay, this is our general fund, just kind of another view of it. Um, the monthly, uh, this one's pretty nice, it's just the year-to-date because it's just July. Um, so that's eight hundred and thirteen we've already explained about for revenues, five point seven-nine percent. Going down to our expenditures, the one million eighty-one thousand, seven point five-four percent, and we have seventy-eight thousand of outstanding, um, if y'all would like to know what those are. It is, we have some HVAC units, we have a shot clock basketball worth five thousand. Um, we have some band, uh, equipment, we have other HVAC-related items. We have, um, the stadium visitor side being cleaned worth six thousand two hundred and fifty, and then just other supplies. Good, moving on to the special revenues fund. This once again looks in line with last year, we don't really collect money of the revenues, um, at this time. Um, so nothing yet, and then also all of our, um, federal grants, we will be kind of readjusting the budget and getting those approved. Um, because right now we're kind of staying flat to last year's budget. Um, three hundred and eighty-three thousand of expenditures to date. As you know, we are paying for, um, instructional specialists this year, so that's part of salaries as well as other, um, salaries that are funded like school nutrition. Capital projects, nothing much to say here, we received five dollars of interest. And then debt service, um, we received a hundred thousand, um, out of our one million four ninety-nine budget, and then we paid a fee of three thousand five hundred. And we are in line with what we were at last year as well. How was that all? No questions?
Any questions? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next we have Officer Brandon Lively, he's gonna speak about school resource officer.
Good evening, everyone. Hello, Brandon Lively, Chief Police Link in Police Department. Here I'm just pitching a little proposal because I've had multiple board members, superintendent, Dr. Light, all my principals are pretty much exposed their interest in needing SRO in the schools. So we're trying to find the best route for our community, being a small community is hard, we know that. Funds wise to do it as well as having small agencies to be able to provide that service. But over the last six months, I've done a lot of research and a lot of looking into it, and there's, there's grants out there that are endless that could help us with this progress. So what we're talking about implementing basically is putting an officer in the school full-time. And however y'all wanna do it, if you want one officer to go from each school and kind of go back and forth, if you wanted to get one through each school, you'd have one at elementary, one at high, one in middle, or you can just have one at high, middle, and one at elementary. This officer will be full-time at those schools during school hours or during summer school. If you have summer school, anytime students are present, it'd be completely up to y'all. The only thing the police department will be doing will be furnishing that officer, training that officer, keeping them equipped and properly prepared for the job. They would not leave, this would not take away, they would be at the school, we would still provide traffic in the mornings and stuff like that. That would still be covered by road patrol officers. And if there's any issues that are coming, y'all can say, hey, yeah, we would like for them to go help out or something like that. But we really want to focus on an officer staying at the school at every moment that those children are there. We don't, we don't want anybody to feel unsafe, we don't want them to be unprotected, anything like that. Right now, I, overall, the feelings are, they feel safe for the most part, most citizens, most people, they feel, they feel ultimately safe. Our, our average response time looking over the past ten years has been under three minutes to respond to any incident within the cities. We've, we've responded to over two hundred incidences within the school system, whether they be minor incidences for traffic accidents or all the way up to felony cases at the school. We've, um, most of those cases, we were able to kind of, you know, push back on that and say, hey, you can just do this a minute. We don't have nothing to do with it. But other instances, they needed our expertise and our capability to take care of the matter, you know. We're just, like I said, this is just proposed, this ain't nothing nobody's got on to, this ain't nothing we're pushing on anybody that was asked of us to present. And, um, like I said, we just want what's best for our kids. I personally have, well, five kids now, I've got my nephew in the school system here. So I understand the need for school safety. My other officers either have children in the school, family in the school, or friends in the school. So if you say no to this, it doesn't change nothing, we're gonna still respond as quick as we can or be present as much as possible, you know. But this, this would pretty much, no matter what, if they were to work a case in the schools, they would never leave the school campus period. They would call over another officer to do any paperwork, do warrants, do whatever, any arrests, anything. They would take that case over and that officer would stay within the school. They would never, they wouldn't have to leave campus to do anything, all the, it'd basically be a perfect position for any officer that wanted to take it because they get to stay with the kids. This also helps them build a rapport with the students. And rapport nowadays with students is the number one thing, especially with our young. Whereas there's not a lot of respect and not a lot of support right now, you know. Having that officer in the school would help build that rapport and respect, and would, they would be more comfortable coming to that officer, which would help us react more proactive than reactive on responding to incidents. So if there was some sort of incident that's about to occur, you would more likely have them come up and speak, you know, and kind of say, hey, this is what's going on, you know. So, but every one of these officers would have to be trained pretty significantly. They have to attend a mandatory forty-hour training class just for the SRO program, not including all their law enforcement. And then every year they would have to re-attend additional training for updates and stuff like that twice a year, which is a total of, I think, twenty-something hours also every year. We do plan on every one of our officers going through this training regardless of what happens, so they will be prepared if anything does happen on how to respond. Um, of course, this would also, we would do away with all the ten ninety-nine specials like football games, basketball games, stuff like that. We would already do that now, but we, it's just not in our budget to cover that. We, we just can't, we can't do it. Um, but if we were to do that, we would just go ahead and put that into it, and we wouldn't have to aggravate people like Mr. Madden or Ms. Jordan or none of them about, hey, how many officers you need for this event? Or how many you need for this? We'd just say, hey, we're sending such and such, and we're gonna do it, and just cover it on our end, it'll be on payroll on our end. And we'd do away with separate ten ninety-nines and all that stuff, so.
So one, one question that I, I noticed that, and I know this is an estimate based on the different things, you know, the hundred thousand, which is on this next slide.
It would be, yes.
Um, but that's then being, would be on your payroll, right? I mean, that's.
That's great, that would directly go to the city, and the city would be responsible for paying them, doing all their insurance, everything else. They would be on, uh, GMA, um, retirement and insurance. All their stuff will be fully, it'd be just like having one of us in your school, except they're yours. They have their own vehicle, they have everything, they'll be able to do everything that we can, they have every bit of power we have, except they're yours pretty much throughout the whole day. That radio, that, it doesn't matter what's going on, if it doesn't have to do with this school right there, they're not leaving. They're gonna stay there, they're gonna support you, they're gonna take care of your students and your staff. That's, that's the way it's gonna be.
So the arresting authority would come through the cities, because I know as a school district, we don't have an arresting authority.
Right, right, the arresting authority would come through my office.
Yes.
So they would be attached to me, so that's where their arresting authority would lie.
You said there are grants out there, and would y'all play with those?
There's, there's cops grants, you got the cops grant, which is a, uh, state, then you got the federal grant, which is putting officers in schools, so it's, um, placing officers in the schools or cops in schools, whatever it's called. There's multiple federal, state, and all these grants out there that we can apply for. And they look at agencies and towns of our size before they do larger cities and stuff like that that have the resources.
But you would do that, and that would come off of?
Well, I see the school, the school would put in for, just like they did with their grant for security, um, cameras and stuff like that, they would put in. And then at the same time, I would go ahead and put in for a grant also. And see, maybe if they wouldn't award y'all, maybe they awarded us, do whatever, you know, or if they awarded y'all a certain amount and then awarded us a certain amount. Being two different entities, you can apply in different directions and hopefully get more money out of it, you know. But like I say, grants are exactly that, they're grants, you know how they are. You get them or you don't, this is one of those things. Well, yeah, that would be, I've calculated everything, spoke with areas around that are compatible with us, including Wilkes County Sheriff's Office and stuff like that. And the hundred thousand per officer annually is pretty much, that's spot on where you're gonna have to be because that would cover everything, that, that's everything listed. Like I said, SRO salary, PTO, all of that, all their stuff that we get, including the vehicles and stuff like that. But like I said, that's only eighty percent of the total cost of those officers because we would keep the other twenty percent through our measures and use them throughout the summer when y'all are not using them to either get them trained up, either, um, put them on the road to keep up that rapport with the, the community and stuff like that, or even to do simple things, the security checks or whatever, or even go out and do road patrol if they want to do, run traffic or something. They'll feel like, still feel like the real police, you know. So we understand that sometimes they need a break, and they're gonna need time to use their vacation time up because even though, even though y'all may be on break or something, they can come work for it. Well, I really don't want to use my vacation up right now, you know, I want to use it up during the summertime with my family, you know. Y'all put a Christmas break or something like that, they can come in and work for us and just come in on our end.
So this, this would require you to, if we were to decide and do, let's just say, wanted each, you would have to hire?
I would hire two new officers.
Get them ready.
Get two, two vehicles fully equipped for everything they need to do for this job. And like I said, we're currently working on different grants, different funding for our department itself to get us equipped for anything that we may need. And like I said, yes, a lot of it comes from people's concern with recent school shootings and stuff like that, but that's not all that SRO does, there are a lot more. That, it's just a resource that you have there twenty-four seven. Like I said, our average response time is somewhere around two and a half minutes, somewhere in there. And that two and a half minutes can mean a lot of difference, you know. But that's just average, we have had response times where incidents may not have seemed so severe, so we had to finish up the call where they were on and go over there, you know. And that incident could have escalated in that time, you know.
So, so we use, um, we use them at games and how, how much money do we spend a year to offset that hundred thousand dollars?
On average, just football games, we'll spend anywhere from four to six hundred dollars per game, that's six home games, so six times six, thirty-six hundred there. Then two officers at the basketball games, that's around twelve, um, games a year, so that's twenty-four hundred more, that's six thousand. And then those are the primary, two primary ones that we do, so anywhere from six to seven thousand. If you get into the playoffs, then you're starting to get, we're gonna have more on duty, so I think it would be safe to say eight thousand plus. And that comes out of primarily athletic performance. Prom, graduation, all the other stuff too.
So, so would you cover all that as well?
Yes, sir, that's what I'm saying, we would just go ahead and chalk it up to, we're gonna cover that as well. Because it also benefits the officers that are gonna be working also because they don't have to, I don't know, everybody in here files taxes, you gotta wait on ten ninety-nine, they gotta type up ten ninety-nine, and they gotta do something totally separate with budgeting and all that for special. And it's just so much easier to just have it all on one, one W two, they can, taxes are already taken out, they don't have to worry about that at the end of the year. They just, so it's kind of a win-win for all of us.
Let me, let me rephrase that. So if they're on salary for a hundred thousand years, what we're saying, would that, they get paid separate for that or that would just be part of it? That's what I was asking.
No, that's part of everything, that's everything's calculated in, no, no, everything's calculated in, yes.
Okay, alright, okay.
Yes, sir, but see, that would come in on, on part of our part too, because we wouldn't just, you wouldn't just have the one officer, two officer you paid for. You would have as many officers as I feel like you'd need for that event. So if I feel like we have a Washington Wilkes game, which is a big competitive game coming, I, I could probably provide you more than what you usually request at that hundred dollars an hour. I might just pull some people from other places, part-time guys, whatever, we fill it up with seven, eight officers, you know. So it's just.
They also incorporated the county in this conversation and giving them an opportunity to pitch in their numbers. Their numbers were, were very relevant, very close. Um, On and I and Layton have all had conversations with Brandon about the same thing and trying to work together. We're not excluding the county at all, but just trying to incorporate as many options as possible. Any way that we can find a grant dollar, we're, we're looking at that too, so. We're trying to figure this out, I know that, that the sheriff had talked about to a number of folks having more officers come through the building, every B officer. Every beat officer that is in the county that's in this area is required to come into the school at, at least once a day if they're a beat officer that day. I know that the, a city is doing the same thing. In fact, I was standing doing lunch duty at the high school and sheriff walked up and touched me on the back. I thought it was one of the kids and turned around and there's a sheriff behind me. But they're there a lot more often now and that's great to see. It's not a predicted time, they don't have to be there at lunch duty. They come in at all weird times and I want that. I don't want it to always be ten o'clock. So that portion of it has been a, a great help, I believe. This would be an even better fix, but we've gotta work through the budget requirements and the grants to try and make this work. Because it is an expensive venture and these guys are not gonna do this for free and I don't blame them. I wouldn't do it for free either.
And this is, this is definitely something we've been looking to, I, I mean, I've talked about it ever since I've been here, you know. And it's, it's something that would benefit us. Do we have to have it? Who's to say, you know? When something does happen, I mean, you never know. But like I said, we will not change what we already do. We're actually trying to improve on how much we are around the schools. Because we do realize when school is in session, there's more people on the school campus than there is the population of the city of Lincoln at any given time for the most part. So we just, we just wanna provide a best security option for y'all.
When we approve something of this nature, how long will it take to really, for you to be able to, to get all the equipment? And actually, in your mind, to be able to hire someone?
I currently have applicants on file that are ready to come to work for our department. First choice will come to my current officers on, on staff, on if they wanna be on the SRO side or if they wanna be with the police department side just regular. But like I said, all of my officers will be trained as SROs regardless. Because if that SRO does have to be out because they're sick or something like that's going on, it would be filled in by another officer. So every one of them would be trained regardless.
So you feel that you could, you could make this happen pretty quick, is what you're saying?
It, it would be, because everything else is just equipment wise. And I just got back from a chief's conference where we have a ton of vendors and they're like, look, if they ain't got it, I got it, you know. Everybody's saying, the reason, the biggest supply and demand issue is because of stuff from overseas and stuff from other places. We have a lot of, not only American companies, but Georgia companies right now for security and manufacturing and stuff like that, equipment that we need, that can provide us with that service a lot quicker now, so.
Any other questions, Chief Lovin? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Yes, sir.
Next we have non-resident enrollment requests that I asked you to open up and look at.
Obviously, it won't be on the screen above, but it will be in front of the board members. In written on each sheet is the grade level of guesstimation. And I say that because on a couple of these, they're homeschooled, so they'll have to take a placement test prior to being placed. We do that for the student's benefit. If you're at a level, let's say, third grade or academic or chronologically, you're supposed to be in fifth. Placing you in fifth isn't gonna help you, it's gonna challenge you to where you're not gonna be successful. So we do placement tests on anybody coming from homeschool on purpose to try and help the child and of course, help the, the students.
As you say, there, there are three different families, so we can, we can vote on each family?
You could.
Or we can vote on them all together?
So I know homeschool, obviously, they would not have a, a record on file at the school. But all the children we have accepted, just to state this, we're checking all their back records, we know all their past.
We do that before they ever get to this portion of it, that's why the, the principal signs off. As an example, if, if you say that you went to Washington Wilkes and we look it up and call Washington Wilkes and they say, we don't know who you are, that's a big red flag and the principal would say, what's wrong? Because they don't even know who you are. And we would hold that and do more research either for next month or tell you absolutely no.
From school to school, can they, if, if there is a discipline record, can they release that to another school?
They, they can tell us what it is and share it with us, yes.
So I have one you do this by family?
Oh, we can, y'all can make a motion to, to accept them all or by, we can do it by family, either way. Have them present.
The first family would be three, right?
Yeah, the first three are one family.
I'll make a motion that we accept the first three in the family.
Okay. Second, on the favor. Okay. And the next two. I'll make a motion, approve. Okay, we have a motion to accept the next two in the high school. Second by Ms. Sparksdale, all in favor? Yes. And then the final one.
Make a motion that we accept the one in favor.
We have a motion on Ms. Sparksdale. Second, and the second by Mr. Hyman, all in favor? Yes. Alright, thank you very much.
Can I ask a question? How many have, do we have a approximate number, how many we have added to our roster?
We have four that are out of state, is that correct? You just said it earlier, four that are out of state. I'll have to get the exact number, but I think it's like ten or twelve, somewhere in that range. It's a few, that's not counting the.
That's not counting the.
Correct. But they're, they're within state, come to us either because their parent works here or we have accepted them here. And they're within the state, so we get FTE for them. The tuition is the ones that are the worst.
I think it's paying a lot for our schools.
It does, absolutely, yes.
Ones that are wanting to attend.
Well, and some of the comments that you read on these, to me, are even more telling, because the parents being on. And Dr. Gumbey puts out the vacancy sign quite a bit too, so we get a few of them.
On the, um, speaking of enrollment, do you have those numbers for us right now, as far as?
Total enrollment? No, I don't, but I'll have it for ten day numbers, so I can easily share that with the board via email.
I suppose we're three seventy-eight with those two.
We'll be at.
Thank you.
Six oh five with those three.
Two fifty-six.
And our six oh five, the last day of school last year were at five seventy-eight, and now we're at six oh five.
We're at three thirty-one and we're at three seventy-six.
Obviously going up.
Just a testament of what's going on.
Yes. That's saying a lot and you'll see that as we get to the next page too. The next item is a, a routine item. For those of you that have been on the board for a while, you understand. We go through a bid process every five years with food service. Not only to be fair to the companies that actually bid, but it also allows us to be competitive across the state, instead of little Lincoln County trying to get a, a proper bid from, say, US Foods as an example. Once we go through that bid process, they're held to that, that bid number if they can get us those items. We have the option to continue with that bid and to roll it over for a grand total of five years. We have that option to roll this bid over at this point. I, I am recommending that we roll this bid over. The, the prices that we have are, are still very good. As we all know, everything has skyrocketed and we have to pay some of that. But I would recommend that we maintain our bid process and simply renew or roll over these bids. And this is for food service only.
Did you see the different ones that are on this stuff there?
Right, Haskins.
That covers everything.
Right.
I make a motion, we accept it, continue the, the route forward.
Thank you.
Alright, I have a motion on Ms. Reese. Second by Ms. Bassett. Any other discussion on it? All in favor? Yes.
We have two policies that are up for review and they'll stay in review. They're, they're fine as, as written. One of them is on bus conduct, which is E D C B. And then the next one is internet network acceptability use, which is I F B G. Both of those are fine the way they're written, so they would simply be for review.
I have one question.
Sure.
On the bus.
Yes, sir.
Because this is the one we discussed a little bit, just making sure clarity is. I know the bus is the same as the school as far as misconduct in the policies.
Correct.
But misconduct on the bus, just say it's a one and then one in the classroom, that would be a two? Or are they separate in measures on how, if that makes sense what I'm trying to ask?
They would count as two referrals from that individual student.
For the individual.
Correct.
So it wouldn't be a one and a one, it, it actually would be two referrals?
That would count as two and, and quite frequently they have a bad day, so they get one and one on the same day. But I think what you're getting at is some of the issues that happen on the bus is progressive as well and they can be removed from the bus due to their behavior. So that can definitely happen. Obviously, they could be removed from the classroom for a short period of time, but the bus is the same way, so that option is there.
Good, thank you for that.
Sure.
Any other questions on these policies? Okay, we'll move on to the superintendents' reports.
We've got a few items tonight that not only are very exciting and, and as Mr. Reese says, is very telling in how well our district is doing, but things that I shared with the, the teachers and the, the whole body of employees on opening morning. Michael, I was looking up there and then you changed it. Thank you.
I was trying to get to the correct one.
You're doing good, you're doing good. We started with the AP scores. Now, I know the board saw that little email blurb that we got from Dr. Wolsky. We tried to put it in a chart that was very easy to read and you could connect the numbers a lot easier. You see that we have two biology and two that scored three or higher. In calculus, we had five that took the test, four scored three or higher. Those are awesome numbers. English language comp, thirteen took the test and only two passed. But I had a meeting with Mrs. Wilkes and talked about what, what can we do to try and alter that? And she tried to explain that all of the kids that come into English language comp are the kids that are, are truly going to college in their mind and I, we hope all of them do, but they're not necessarily gonna be English majors. So as they prepare, they're preparing for college to be able to write that English one-on-one paper that all of us have to write to pass. They're not preparing to be English majors. The AP class and the AP test is very challenging. She prepares them for college. If we want her to focus just on numbers, she'll do that, but I think that's gonna hurt our kids. So I offered more training, she gave me a reasonable explanation that I believe and I think our kids do very well in her class. We're gonna continue to try and keep those numbers as high as they can be, but her explanation made sense to me. English lit comp, you're talking seventy percent, which is very good on an AP test, out of the ten that took it, seven passed. Two D art was the first year we did it. Psychology was online, human geography was online, and I know some folks that have taken that and that is a booger of a test. And that person passed and US government was online and again, that person passed, so very, very happy with those results. As we get down to milestones, this milestone comparisons are to CSRA, because when we did this, that was the only comparison we had at the time. But obviously, we understand there's twelve systems in the CSRA and I want you to look at where we ranked based on grade and where we ranked in the twelve systems. To look at CSRA in the elementary school, the English Language Arts for reading, they had to score at or above grade level. You're looking at third grade, we were second out of twelve systems. Second out of twelve systems in sec, in third grade, fourth grade, and in fifth grade across the CSRA. I don't know if you saw it on the, on news or not, but the news talked about how Lincoln County, in fact, she said Little Lincoln County, scored so well on the milestones. Which I was very proud of just hearing her say Lincoln County scoring well, but Little Lincoln County made me feel even better. You look at ELA proficiency, three out of four, third for third grade, third for fourth grade and second for fifth grade out of twelve systems. Look at math. Third grade, we're third out of twelve, second out of twelve for math in fourth grade and first out of twelve in fifth grade. But on top of that, tenth in the state out of two hundred and eleven systems, our kids scored tenth in the state. Now, I made that and I embarrassed the world out of the teachers and if you hear it, I did it and I'll do it again. I made them stand up and everybody in that entire cafeteria cheered for them, because that's such an awesome feat and such an awesome effort. That's huge. You can see down there in the bottom, milestones for third and fourth, we do not test in science, but we do in fifth and it was second out of twelve. Moving to middle school, you see ELA, second, second and third out of twelve systems in ELA for sixth grade, seventh grade and eighth grade. ELA, that was for reading, I'm sorry, ELA proficiency, second out of twelve, first out of twelve in seventh grade. Again, I made her stand up and embarrassed her as well. Twelfth out of the state of two hundred and seven systems. And oh, by the way, that's a first year teacher. First year teacher, now ranks twelfth in the state in teaching seventh grade ELA. Second out of twelve in eighth grade, math, sixth grade, first out of twelve. That one's eleventh in the state out of two hundred and seven systems, eleventh in the state. Second out of twelve in seventh grade and third out of twelve in eighth grade. Moving down to Algebra I, first out of eleven systems, because Columbia County doesn't do Algebra I that way. But we got first out of eleven systems in Algebra I. You remember that we take that Algebra I group and give them a high school credit if they pass Algebra I in eighth grade. Obviously, the cream of the crop in math for eighth grade, but they get a high school credit, which gives them a chance to get four credits in math when they go to high school and move them even farther along the math sequence. Science, first out of twelve in eighth grade and social studies, third out of twelve in eighth grade. Again, an awesome performance. Moving down to high school, American Lit, again with reading, second out of eleven systems, seventy-one point six percent. American Lit percentage at three or above, second out of eleven systems. Algebra I, ten out of eleven systems, but we also took the cream of the crop off with that the eighth grade numbers. So I don't know how close that number is to being right, but we're still working on improving that. Biology, third out of eleven and US history, first out of ten systems. And yes, we made them stand up and as you remember, the US history had a perfect score and the math had a perfect score. So again, I want to applaud what a great job our teachers are doing and what a great job our principals and our kids are doing. And they are really performing and that's all we can ask them to do. Next item in the superintendent's report, this is an information item. I was asked to bring forward things that are, that come to bid, bring forward at least thirty days ahead of time. Well, you remember, anything over ten thousand dollars has to come to bid for three bids. You have to come up with three bids. So this hot water heater, I was quite surprised until they explained it to me. The hot water heater is a hundred and twenty gallon commercial grade hot water heater that feeds the family and consumer science. Family and consumer science, unfortunately, and Mr. Hyman, this will make more sense to you, was power, it's powered by four eighty, three phase. Consequently, it's a very expensive item, so McCutcheon bid fourteen four eighty, Universal is fourteen three sixty and Jordan is fourteen two fifty. I'll bring that back for approval next month to give you the thirty days requested, so that we can get all of that completed. But I wanted to show that tonight, so that we can get it on the list.
Any other questions?
Sure.
Just a couple of things on this.
Sure.
The bids are a little bit different and we just need to make sure we're looking apples and apples.
Okay.
The second one, if you look, has an eighty gallon tank. The second one, if you look, has an eighty-gallon tank. We're talking one-twenty, but it states.
Supposed to be one-twenty.
It states eighty.
It does, you're right, all right, I'll check that.
Also, the last one does state a warranty. None of the other two above state any warranty information.
All right.
That may be something we would want to gather.
I'll get that and bring it to you.
Just to make sure we're looking at everything on the same page.
The last one says it's putting a.
Expansion tank, yeah, it did. And the other two don't even say anything about that. So I don't know if it's something that is needed or not needed. That may be just a last. That is great.
I'll check on those, thank you very much. Okay, another item that's set in front of you for tonight's superintendent's report, the College and Career Fair, which is always a very big event for us and many of you have attended that event. It is February sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. Let other folks that you have seen at that event know. We're trying to get the word out, but the more we talk about it, the more we'll have there for our students to talk to. I know that Georgia Power is always there. We have a lot of big college names there. It's a great opportunity for our kids to walk into one spot and talk to all those people at once. So definitely looking forward to that event. We also have workforce grant. Ms. Jordan and I, I sent Ms. Jordan this idea of a grant and she come up with about fifty ideas, but has narrowed it down to two now. Looking at ways that we can use this grant. And the grant's for twenty-five thousand. And the first idea or the first option is a community garden shed. And there's a lot of information there where it would take out forty-three of our parking places right directly across from the existing greenhouse. And it would also create a pole barn for the tractor and a few of our other implements. And it would be less than the twenty-five thousand dollar grant totally completed, right? The other option on this sheet is our existing greenhouse, which is twelve years old, of course, would be, I guess, recovered and revamped on the inside. They're having some plumbing issues with it as well. And that cost is estimated at forty thousand, which would require additional funds to go with that. We wanted to bring this to the board and give the board an opportunity to provide input. And the deadline to apply for this grant is August fifteenth. Now, I know Ms. Jordan has probably written both grants and all she has to do is push play, but I wanted to at least present them to the board, have the board an opportunity to have a little input if they would like. And both of them, I think, would be well spent. But I want the board to have the opportunity to have some input.
I guess my question is, just showing the barn there, why would we need to take out all those parking spaces?
Well, because it would include a garden as well. So it would be fenced in so that we would have a garden area along with a barn, a pole barn area for the tractor and implements and sawmill. And they already wrote a grant last year to get us a tractor, sixty thousand dollars with implements. And it's not a whole lot of room to store all those things with the ag area. So that would kind of help with that as well as Mr. McGill's interest in having a community garden that he can give back to the community. He already does somewhat of one with a, the raised beds between the high school and middle school, but that's limited. He really would like to open it up and make it bigger.
It's the gardens what's taking up space.
Right, right.
You want to have any other space?
Yeah, it says in the area, even the garden.
Not really, I mean, as you think behind, we have a little bit of space behind like the softball field, but there's a lot of trees right there. There's a little bit of space behind the high school, but that's on a pretty drastic incline right behind the baseball field is what I'm thinking. And behind the soccer field, we're out of space. That's only what, probably ten yards? So it's pretty tight in there. I wish we had another field that we could say was ours because that'd be a great place for the kids to practice driving the tractor and those kind of things because they do that in competition as well.
You need to look in the parking lot too. I mean, it's going to be pipe under that. I mean, it's a lot when you go to.
Right, we would have to check all of that before we did anything to start bidding, yes, without question. Yes.
We have a surveyor, he can tell us the best place to put it.
I think I know a surveyor, but we would have to check with him and see if he's available.
Future growth.
And it is a grant for twenty-five thousand dollars. We're not guaranteed, it's competitive. It could be that they turn it down altogether. I do know that, and that's why I included some of the information. The things they like to see are things that is using multiple pathways, is using student involvement, community involvement. And I think that would be a good way to do it and possibly get it. But like I said, we're not really guaranteed.
There is a need for it, I can see that.
I just didn't want to go, we didn't want to go ahead with it if it wasn't even going to be an option, so.
Would it work if we went across the road and bought some more land from Holland?
Yeah.
That'd work real good.
I mean, I didn't know if it would be close enough to the classroom.
I'd take it the construction class is going to build the pole barn.
Well, the idea was that we would do the basic frame of the pole barn and then we would add, you know, siding and stuff that we would do with our sawmill. We'd, you know, process the wood and everything, so.
I don't know if any of you have seen that sawmill work, but they've actually been creating some of the wood that they have been using in the construction lab. It's really, really neat to watch.
Y'all going to do a projected future growth of the school for, you know, taking the parking spots? I don't know when they'll be needed, we'll put a parking deck out there then.
Well, that's why I put numbers in there about the, how many spots we're actually using now and how many, you know, are available, that's in there as well.
It's the top of that page right there.
You know.
Would it really work across the road if we?
Well, we could, I don't think, it would cost more than twenty-five thousand dollars. I don't think that this grant would be for, it's for increasing a pathway, it's not necessarily buying land.
I'm saying if somebody donated the land.
I mean, I would, I would think that anything.
I didn't know if going across that road would cause a problem.
What my brain is, that's our, that's what.
The deadline to apply for the grant is August fifteenth.
Right.
Okay, so if we get it and we don't use it, we just return the money, right?
Well, that's the kicker. I really didn't want to have to do that. That doesn't necessarily look too good and we're less likely to get any opportunity like that in the future, so.
Any other position to?
I wouldn't put a parking lot out there, that's my opposition. Until we do more investigating, I mean, that's just me.
Yes, understand that.
That's my opposition. I think it's a great idea, but I hate to use those spaces.
Placement's the issue.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. If you can get us about seventy acres across the street, we're in.
Oh, man, I can get seventy.
I'll take thirty.
I don't think we can get there. But I was thinking more like four, five.
That would be sufficient.
So do we need to vote on one of these? Just to show our.
I just wanted to have.
Just a matter of discuss and.
I just wanted to discuss and have board input because I'm sure in the world, the world thinks you're vacuum, so we're asking. You can email me with more ideas. I mean, your idea of not losing spaces makes perfect sense and that was actually mentioned a couple of times before.
What do we have across the creek down here behind the Harold Softball Field? Do we have any land in there enough to?
There's a little bit. And the way I understand it, and I'm not a surveyor, but the way I understand it is the way that creek runs through there, that's our land and the other side belongs to that cattle pasture.
I think we own the other side too. I think we hauled a console over there and stored it when we did it. But I'll look at it.
Okay. If we do, let me know.
Okay.
Because that could change.
I just, I hate to tell that parking lot, because you're getting into a whole lot more than just getting the asphalt up. I mean, you've got utilities under there.
You might be able to get some land back that way also.
If there's enough that direction, then we could sure use it, that'd be great.
I mean, there's some back there if you have to buy it.
Right, that's my point. If it's ours though, as he was describing, then we can use it.
Right.
That'd be helpful.
So right now, do we encourage to go ahead with the grant for the community garden shed?
I mean, I don't see anything wrong with applying. Because I'm like, Mr. Hyman, I don't want to put it in the parking lot out here.
If we get.
Google Maps to tell us how far back that goes, maybe they're.
I'll look at it, I'll look at it.
What do you want there? Thank you for looking.
I'll do it in just a minute, I appreciate it back here. They always discuss land in.
That's correct, that's correct. Okay, that's all I have for the superintendent's report.
Great.
Question?
Sure.
Can I get a bus report? And I want to ask the board's input if there's something that we could ask. The Transportation Management, I don't know if it's something we want to know every time or not, but moving forward, you know, making decisions about buses. If we have information about it, it'd be great.
Okay.
So we know that we got two or three in the shop or the air conditioner not working on, all this kind of stuff. Because it is a community and student parent issue, so.
Well, I know that we have, I think it's nine spare buses.
Nine.
I believe we have nine spare buses and then our route buses. So from there, we can give you an idea of what, you want to know what buses are in the shop? What buses are working?
Yeah, just a status update, just something, you know.
Okay.
Five buses without air conditioning and half air conditioning and two with transmissions being replaced, just a quick update or something.
Okay.
Just some, some kind of idea. So if we decide we want to buy eight or nine buses, we know how many we need. Is that possible?
I can get that for us.
No, I mean, I'm the only one asking, I don't know if any of these other guys will know or not, ladies.
Information's good to have.
I can get that for us. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Make a motion, board is there?
Second.
I want to bring our meeting back to order. The superintendent has recommended and I make a motion that we accept the resignation of Ms. Shannon Shelton as a paraprope and interpreter. Effective the evening.
Second.
Now, second, by Mr. Reese, all in favor? unanimous? The superintendent has recommended and I make a motion that we hire Ms. Ashlyn Reynolds as a paraprope in the high school, effective August third, two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
Second by Mr. Madison, all in favor? unanimous? Superintendent has recommended and I make a motion that we accept the resignation of Ms. Delicia Ferguson as a school bus driver.
Second.
And a second by Mr. Reese, all in favor? unanimous? The superintendent has recommended and I make a motion that we approve Ms. Shonda McGumby as a substitute teacher with two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year. All in favor? unanimous? There's Ms. Sparksdale, give us a second. Superintendent has recommended and I make a motion that we hire Ms. Mary Bratty as a full-time bus driver for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year.
Second.
Second by Ms. Sparksdale, all in favor? unanimous? I make a motion that we extend the superintendent's contract for a year to the end of June twenty twenty-four and extend his current company salary to a hundred and twenty-eight thousand.
Second.
And a second by Mr. Reese, all in favor? unanimous? Anything else?
Make a motion. About the, um, grant.
And, um.
I'll probably explain it to her, but go right ahead. I already did, yes, ma'am, while we were in here. I already did.
Motion to adjourn.
What I do, a second by Mr. Madison, thank you.